Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next time is public comment. There are no public comments. Move on to the consent agenda. Any questions for staff?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Then moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item, new business, consideration of ordinance S 3207 authorizing proceeding concerning eminent domain in light of Homer's Pond Dam project. Mr. Stites?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, all says the ordinance, because statute requires that we first do the resolution that we did last meeting. And then since that time in Exhibit B, we have the public notice that was done. It has to only be done once per statute. And then now, we'll need an ordinance. And what I've included in that is the language that's required. Looked at past ones that Ms. Logan prior to me had done. And then I did put in language in there that I saw in other ordinance that basically allow, if they come to the point of agreeing to what our previous offer was, that would allow us the authority to resolve it in a settlement in the original offer that we made, but nothing above that. So if they come at $5,000 and one cent, we bring it to the commission as your will. But besides they have to go $5,000, then we can settle that for you. And then this will allow me to file the petition and get the proceedings going up in district court.
What happens if it's appraised at lower than we offered?
Then we, that's what it's appraised at.
Okay.
So it'd be similar to what happened in the school district is they've got appraised lower than the offer is my understanding. And whatever the appraisers and the judge enters for an order. And the first part was administrative hearing. And then if it gets appealed, then it goes into a court proceeding, even though it's still in the district court. And so this kind of adds one more layer there, so.
This land was appraised by the county at $2,770 an acre and it's less than an acre. Or that parcel, 2.6 acres was, but do the math on it.
Per acre for that whole property or just the area of work looking at?
The back?
There's usable ground, there's really not usable ground, right?
Yeah, that property is broken into two assessments I had here a second ago. Yeah, it's 20, the front part of property like my parcel or anybody's parcel here is appraised at a higher value. But the parcel, the undeveloped land of 2.59 acres is appraised at $7,180. So if you do the math, you come out with 2770 an acre. This parcel here is less than an acre. I think it's 41,000 square foot or so, right at nine tenths of an acre here over. So, so the offer the city made was literally almost double of the county appraised value. And that's county appraised value, I'm taking where it's worth.
Well, the owner said he did do some improvements to the property and he incurred some costs, so we accounted for that. So it's a fair offer.
I believe it is.
Any further questions for staff? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance S 3207 authorizing proceeding concerning eminent domain in light of Homer's Dam project.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Landis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alburton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of ordinance S 1238 regulating small facility, small cell facilities based upon aesthetics and construction standards. Mr. Dinkle?
In G 1238, because in the last year, as we start moving towards 5G, telephone companies have started going towards these small cells as opposed to the big towers that we're used to. And so the FCC has come down and said municipalities cannot regulate those outside of, unless they publish certain aesthetic standards. By a certain point in the time right now, because of the appeals going on with the administrative regulatory agency there, the deadline to publish is April 25th. So this way we can get it on, publish it. This allows us to say, because otherwise what we might end up with is five poles in the public right of way. Or since the, my understanding is the various vendors, providers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, whoever does cell service, they don't like to use each other's towers. So you may have six facilities on one tower. And does that meet the aesthetic standards of what we want here in this community is the question. What I looked at were a number of options. I saw McPherson had a very vague one. And that worries me because vagueness in light of the FCC cracking down on it may preempt us to be able to do anything, saying you're not, doesn't really say anything. City of Overland Park had one that was very strict, but it was written about four years ago. So it may not meet federal preemption of what it allows. So what's been passed around, what a lot of other cities in Kansas have looked at was the City of Pittsburgh Art Commission model, which is what we have here that basically says, hey, these are clear standards of what we want. This is in light of the FCC regulations. So this way we can say what appearances we want. And then we basically run it through Building and Codes Division of the Fire Department. So that way we make sure everything's in the right of way correctly.
Any further questions?
Mr. Dinkle, we put some boxes or something in up on 1300 North Madison some years back. Did that have something to do with cell phones? It did, didn't it?
Yes, in 2014, before I got here, the city commissioner did a franchise agreement with the company. And they, those are basically sprinkled in the center portion of town along Adams. I noticed some along Jefferson. Did have complaints with it because the following year when I became city manager, that people complained to me about them. Because they're setting, I mean, they're setting on a utility pole, but it's in the right of way, but it's in front of your house. And we really had to work to make sure they went to the side, not direct straight out from your house. And had a lot of issues with, I mean, you know, worked through. The city does receive some franchise fee and I don't remember how much, not that much, a couple thousand a year we get franchise fees on there. And the question, and these are subject to franchise fee, probably 5% down the road that come in here.
Well, they also provided much improved service.
The cell phones, yeah.
For people as well.
And that's to do with the connectivity?
Right.
You had to be, what we did probably wrong then, and this is when we had the engineer, Greg was still here. We worked on really making sure that, don't just say yes to them, say yes over here and not in front of here. I remember we had a property on 13th and something over in this way here where, where the guy was upset, the property owner, because he had just cleaned out trees, made it really look good. And they stuck it on the pole there and he says, why don't they go to the lot side of me? Of course, they would have to clean the trees out, which we finally made them do because it didn't sit in front of a house. And so I think if you use some common sense, you can do that. Because don't get the pole that's straight out your kitchen window, you know, get the pole that's over here.
So by having the ordinance, we have control over what we're going? And it's, I read the ordinance and it's very well put together.
There is.
The majority of that's Pittsburgh, but thank you.
In section three, letter F, there was a Pittsburgh that snuck its way in.
That, and we can, we can correct that. I thought I got all the Pittsburgs.
Letter F, yep. Yeah.
Give that amended.
Can I need change?
There's a Pittsburgh, Kansas, so.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number G-1238 regulating small cell facilities based upon aesthetics and construction standards.
Second. Then moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Landis?
Yes.
Mr. Alburton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of the KDOT agreement with the City of Junction City for Millen overlay of McFarland Road.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, in 2016, KDOT did some road improvements along US 77 Highway Corridor and K-18 West Day Street Corridor. And when they did that, they detoured traffic through city limits and to route it back to 77 and through the city. KDOT designated the traffic route to be Spring Valley Road and Rucker Road. During the course of the highway improvements, the traffic pattern did not follow that designated detour. Instead, they used McFarland Road as part of the detour route. And due to the extra traffic that was on that surface of McFarland, it deteriorated the, the road cause, increased potholes. So the city contacted KDOT and see if there's any monies available to repair McFarland Road. And when we did get in contact with KDOT, KDOT did agree to make an inch and a half Millen overlay on McFarland Road. With a cost sharing with the city, half and half with a maximum cost on it. And we have that agreement. And agreement says that they would willing to pay up to $75,000 for that portion of the roadway to Millen overlay. There's no impact on the budget and we recommend that you approve the KDOT agreement for $75,000 through Millen overlay McFarland Road.
And this street's in the plan to get Millen overlay to share anyhow. So basically this helps augment the cost for us.
Do we normally do two inch Millen overlay?
Yeah, we normally do two.
Is one and a half enough?
They're just doing, they just want, they told us they would just do an inch and a half.
Do we think that's enough long-term for us?
We'll do the two.
Right, we're doing two, right.
We're going to get paid for one and a half.
Paid for one and a half, doing two, got it, okay.
Which we always were hoping for more, but this was 75,000 more than a lot of people thought we'd get.
Right.
Make a motion to approve the KDOT agreement with the City of Junction for Millen overlay on McFarland Road.
Second.
Then moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of the change order for Freeman Field Airport Environmental Assessment Study in the amount of not to exceed $9,182 to the Alfred Benish and Company of Manhattan, Kansas.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have, I just had this today because we had an airport board meeting. And this will show you why they are requesting increase in the original agreement.
Thank you.
Do we have to remove all these houses now?
No. That's the reason why they have to, why they're asking for an increase.
Hope yellow means okay, right?
Maybe not.
They all have targets on them, that's good.
Back in December 12, 2018, you approved an environmental study with Benish and Company for not to exceed $90,000. The original contract was for $89,900. The change order request is in a result with a conference with the FAA, Junction City and Benish. When we did call them, they wanted additional work on the scope that we, that Benish had already started. And so that's why they're requesting the $9,182. What you have in front of you is the obstructions that the FAA wants us to tag and locate so they can make a determination of what needs to be removed and what doesn't need to be removed. And we started out with the airport master plan was at 500 and now we are at over 1,000. So that's why they're requesting the additional monies. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may like.
I have a question for you. So when you just spoke about the FAA wants you to identify and tag and locate what needs to be removed. So if I'm looking at this, any of these is?
Those, the yellow, the yellow pins indicate the obstructions. And so therefore, we're going to show the FAA what we think are the obstructions. Then they're going to tell us which ones that we need to remove.
So?
There's some, you see some red pins over there on the going to the west of the runway? Those are definitely obstructions that we need to remove and that's part in that tree line. But they haven't determined whether they want the rest of these or take out. But they want us to identify the heights, what they are, and where their location is at. And it's, it's a common thing right now. They're, they're really big on it. They're going through that. Abilene's going through the same process we are with the FAA. Something about they want everything identified within two nautical miles of the airport, within their boundaries. Not starting at the runway. They start at the outside boundaries of where the airport is and.
So some of these potentially could be houses then?
Correct, especially on the, on the bottom page there. On that, that'd be 14th Street, there's some houses in there.
And Reithers Stadium.
Right, Reithers Stadium, under lights are in there too, so.
So you're saying the yellow is what they feel?
No, the yellow is what we have to identify.
Okay, and red is what we feel, what you guys feel?
That we feel our obstructions right now. So the FAA.
What's the green over here? Is the green good or?
So far, those would be good.
That's good, okay.
Okay, so. But as you can see, we started at 500 and we're over 1,000 now. And we have to complete this before they're going to allow us to approve the airport master plan.
So do we pay for 100% of the assessment study? Or is this a 90-10 off of the $9,000?
This is a, this is a, 80-20, I believe, is what this one is.
20?
Yeah, I'm applying for that grant. We get that 150,000 every year. And so that's what I'm applying for. And that's going to help pay offset these costs. We have to pay for this upfront though and then.
Our portion additionally is 9,182?
Adding to.
It'll be.
Added to that, added to the 89, whatever.
Yeah, out of that 80, out of that 89,000. And then we'll add that to it and then our portion will be 20% of that.
20% of the 9,000?
Correct.
And that's coming out of the airport budget?
Uh huh, that'll come out of the grant.
So there could come a time where a house might, that's tagged, might have to be taken out or moved. So I imagine that there's a process for that or?
Yes, that is, right now, on our airport capital improvement, it's first is the obstruction and then the environmental assessment, then the obstructions. And then they'll be looking at mitigation on items that are in the way of runway protections on, which could possibly mean some houses on that lower half.
But it may mean nothing also.
Right, it could mean nothing also.
Yeah, I imagine a lot of these pins are like telephone poles and fence posts.
Light poles, right, trees.
Trees, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just don't know what's changed. I mean, yeah, trees can grow and I can see taking some trees out. But I mean, those houses have been there forever. You know, what's, what's?
Correct.
Are we, are we having, you know, 747s coming in and landing here or something or?
That's the, that's the question we.
You know, what's the need for the cost? I just don't get it.
Right, that, and that's the question we've asked too, and we don't seem to get any answers other.
Same by plans and other little stuff coming in here, I mean, what's?
Yeah, it's just, it's a 3500 foot runway or 36.
That's what I'm saying, I just, I don't get it.
We need a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the change order in the amount not to exceed $9,182 to Alfred Benish and Company of Manhattan as presented.
Second it.
Then moved in second. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners.
Next item is consideration to proceed with the acquisition and implementation of PubWorks software for the City of Junction City Public Works Department.
I don't know why Ray left. This is his software, but anyway. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, yes, we've, in the last year and a half, Public Works and the IT staff have been researching replacement for our current Cartograph software, which is right now two generations old. We've looked at four or five different systems ranging in price from 50 to, or 50 to $90,000. And they've, I should say, Public Works has decided that they would like to go with PubWorks, which is also used by Riley County and Womigo. So they have support close by. But it's substantially less than the competitors. The overall price for 2019 would be $41,720. And that includes the annual maintenance, which will kick in six months after we go live. If this is approved tonight, we look to go live with the software approximately June, early July timeframe. And yes, Commissioner Fitzgerald, it does have a mobile app where you can report potholes.
Yes.
That was one of the questions that we asked specifically for you.
Oh, Jim, that is so nice of you, Jim.
Yes. But currently, and actually the 5,000 annual maintenance is actually $6,000 less than we're currently paying for Cartograph and Manager Plus. Because this software replaces two pieces of software that we're currently using. Do you like to add anything? It's your software.
Cartograph's good stuff we have, but it's always been one of the Cadillacs.
Yes, it is. They're very proud of it. Actually, we were, they have a, the newest system for the Cartograph is called OMS. And I don't even know what the acronym stands for. Operational Management System, I believe. But it was, without even converting from our old system, it was still $70,000. And the annual maintenance was about 15. So this does everything that Cartograph does, it's just not the Cadillac, it's the Subaru.
Yeah, right.
Jim, are you going to be able to maybe merge anything from?
Yes, actually, this, this quote, the 41,000 includes converting all of our current data over to the new system. And it also will connect to the GIS map that the county publishes. We've spoken with the GIS shop, Troy over there. And we have no issues with piggybacking off their system. So, and actuality, I didn't include it in here. The current software that we pay for GIS for use with Cartograph would go away too. And that's approximately $10,000 a year as well, so.
Good, very good. Questions for staff?
I make a motion to approve, to proceed with the acquisition and implementation of PubWorks software for the City of Junction City Public Works Department.
Second.
Then moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Say thank you, Ray. Thank you.
PubWorks had different applications, but next item, consideration to award fertilizer and herbicide application to Junction City Parks bid to turf design incorporated Junction City in the amount of $14,567.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm filling in for Mr. Lutzleer tonight who's feeling a little under the weather. So I'm here tonight for the award of bid for the fertilizer and herbicide applications to our city parks for the year. This includes the 22 city-owned parks. We received three bids and we're actually, actually asking that you select the second lowest bid. Their, their applications will further our parks and better meet our specifications when the bid went out. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, best I can.
So you're going to need to be a little more specific on the two bids.
Sure.
You said different application or something like that?
There's, so on the bids, there were two separate bids. The bid one sheet, that is for the irrigated parks. For bid two, that is the non-irrigated parks. So it's, it's better to put more money toward your irrigated parks, say that, in your applications towards it. Let me get further into the detail. The, the main reason that the turf design bid would be better is it's a true split application for the pre-emergent herbicide.
It's a what, sir?
A true split application. And that's, it's a better way to apply your herbicides, your pre-emergent herbicides.
Well, I think you're talking to a bunch of people that don't deal with turf except for maybe mowing. But you said once this is better for non-irrigated parks versus not, why is it better? Spoof face a little bit more, I think.
You're banking on rain, basically.
Okay.
So you're spreading money and hoping it rains.
Okay.
Where you're putting your five applications down and setting your irrigation to water it in. Because all these applications have to be watered in.
So the other one's going to be sprayed in, then you don't have to worry about rain?
On?
Turf designs?
Yeah, the higher one.
It's a mix, mix and match of both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's less dependent upon rain? So you feel it's better bang for the buck?
It is, yeah. Even before today, Ed brought me the bids and I went through them and it's, it's a better bang for your buck. The pre-emergent rates are, are better. So we're getting a little more bang for a buck on that one. That's your most important application of the year.
Okay.
I was told also, the city has had great work history with turf design. And responsiveness and.
Okay.
You're local here too, right?
You know?
They are local.
They were not even within the 3%, because we have, you know, that was another option. You're close to 3%, not quite.
What's the word, Commissioner?
I make a motion to approve the award of bid to turf design incorporated in the amount of $14,567 for fertilizer and herbicide applications at the Junction City Parks.
I'll second it.
Then moved in second. And is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is consideration, the request to waive fees for late payment of city water wastewater bills.
Mayor and Commissioners, as for any disputed bill downstairs, it seems like people start downstairs and then they move up to Lindsay. And then they get over to me and Lindsay just.
Lindsay was the wall.
So Lindsay, so Lindsay just decided, well, why go through two processes? So we just met together with the, with his property manager. He has 25 accounts. Didn't get the bill paid on time, got a 10% fee paid or charged. Didn't do anything else and it's on the cutoff day, he got charged the extra. His argument is we never cut off the water. The city policy for many years is written, is that once you make the cutoff list, everybody on that list pays the $50 fee. And there's a lot of good reasons for that. Let's assume Britton and I both were delinquent, not that would happen, but let's assume we were. And we were neighbor, we were the block away and I see that Britton's getting disconnected. I'll run down to the city office and pay. Well, is it fair to Britton that he had to pay and I didn't have to pay where they could have just easily switched around? And so the policy of the city has always been for a number of years, far as we know, is once you make that date. Of course, the argument is, is he was a couple hours late. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. This is not the only one we have. We have another large property owner that actually is a lot larger than this that paid two months in a row for fees late. Their choice, I mean, we, you know, we're not doing it. And I, as I mentioned in my agenda comments, I never say there's a fiscal note on these because we don't want customers to pay late. We want them to pay on time. However, the city needs timely payments from the, from one of the customers to pay our bills and the service needs the city. And so, yeah, you have to have penalties in place to ensure that. And, you know, in whatever city I've been in, you know, on utilities or water and sewer, 90% of your customers pay on time. 85, 90%. So they, you know, if you didn't have this, they'd be carrying the load and people getting delinquent and everything else. You know, I really don't feel that the commission should, my reputation is not to waive it. If you want to do anything, change the ordinance, but I'm not real big on that. I think it's there for a place. It has served the city for many, many years. We may want to clarify a little language in there, Lindsay talked about that. But I'm very confident because on the bill, as you put in there, it says, it's all spelled out right there. It's not a secret. You know, I feel bad, feel sorry for it, but on the other hand though, everybody has the same dates in town.
My question on this is if we have a policy in place, all the water customers are made clear of this policy, you know, it's, it's worked for us, it's not unreasonable by any means, the policy itself. So how did this get up here to us?
Because he requested me to do it. He requested me to do it. Which, you know, I would do to anybody. But you all of a sudden have exposed your account to the public. I did not, you know. And I will, I will not, but, but when you ask to be on the agenda, it's, it's in the packet.
I think it's a slippery slope that we go down waiving fees, starting to process of waiving fees, you know. We gotta be careful with that.
That would be a disaster.
Yep.
And then anybody can.
And I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to see this on, on here again.
I'll just, I'll tell them that there's no choice, but.
This is, you know.
One asked me and I.
We didn't pay our bill one month, we had our water shut off, we paid the $50 and we moved on. We goofed up.
Actually did last July. We spaced it off.
You can arrange to have ACH through your bank account on the river.
Right, and we did that.
Yes.
Right after that.
After you could.
A little slap on the head.
Lindsay be glad to get you signed up.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, when I was, second year I was mayor, we had a gentleman come down and complain about, you know, having his water shut off one night. And he just came back from his grandmother's funeral and so on. And I'll bet none of you guys ever had this done. I just had mine shut off. I guarantee you, nobody's given quarter around here, even the mayor.
You know, and I think maybe I did agree with agenda because I think this also gives notice to the public that we try to, we work in a system. You know, staff always gets, always hears me say more than once, let the ordinance be your guide. And so we follow the ordinance that's set by the city commission.
If we make a mistake, that's one thing, that's on us. If we didn't make a mistake, we follow the policy and that's it.
Right.
So.
Yep, agreed.
Are we all good on that?
No action needed.
You wanna talk about your letter now, or we can do that later?
I'll do it in my comments.
Okay. So, I'm moving on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Fitzgerald, start us off.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I do have a few things this evening, and I will, I'll try and be brief.
There we go.
And I'm sure all the Commissioners will talk about it as well, but this past Saturday, we finally had the nice ribbon cutting for the playground, Fifth Street Park. And a lot of us were, in fact, probably everybody up here, and probably a lot of folks in the audience there, had a big part in, in that Fifth Street Playground Park, just from getting the grant written, and getting the finances from the city, and a bunch of the donors in the town and everything, to walk in and getting the surveys to get the grant, and then actually building the park, and then finally doing ribbon cutting. And every day since then that I've been by there, the place is packed. So, it's a win for the community, and I feel like it's definitely was a community effort, the whole community worked on getting that. Second thing I'd like to talk about is really big into our, our community, how it looks and everything. So, there is a, working on a downtown hanging basket flower project. I worked with the city, with Mr. Dinko and Ed on the watering. So, we've agreed this year, we'll, we'll do one block with hanging baskets, to see that we're able to take care of them. And if we're able to do that, then we'll look at next year, maybe pursue another block or two. I've got a, a workday coming up on April the thirteenth, got a lot of volunteers that's gonna come and help me. We're going to do all the flower beds between Sixth Street and Tenth Street, clean them all up, put in some new mulch and flowers if, if we have them, and just start, you know, continue to help make our downtown look as great as, as we're able to do. Also, this past Saturday, I would just like to do a shout out to Fort Riley. Had fourteen soldiers from Fort Riley come. We spent a little over two hours, and we did all the landscape on the law enforcement memorial. So, kids go by there. We probably had twenty bags of clippings and stuff that we took away, planted in new flowers and everything. And everybody that, that came was glad to be there, and more than, more than happy to volunteer. And there's honestly a lot of people in our community that volunteer all the time as well, so I'm grateful for all the volunteers. So, when you go by there, and you see it, we had a lot of people help take care of that. I also attended this month of March, well, March, the Fort Riley Retirement Ceremony on Fort Riley. Sixteen soldiers retired, three hundred and forty-two collective or cumulative years of service in the United States Army. Of those sixteen, ten stayed in Kansas, three here in Junction City, one in Chapman, one in Abilene, one in Keats, and four in Manhattan. So, to me, that tells me, and all of us, it should tell us that Kansas is a great place to retire to, once you leave the military, because we, they're staying here, and that seems to be a pretty good trend the last couple retirement ceremonies that I have been to. I also had the opportunity to attend last week, the presentation of the Distinguished Service Cross to a soldier that, that during an Afghanistan deployment back in two thousand and eight, that saved some of his soldiers. They were on a escort convoy mission when their Humvee hit an I E D, exploded. His platoon sergeant, which was behind, saw it and thought that they were all dead. The driver, Sergeant DeBolt, when he came out of it, he was on fire. He pulled out one of his battle buddies, got himself put out, and went and got another one of his battle buddies, and then two of the other ones were able to get themselves out. So, there was five soldiers in that Humvee, one of them did not make it. But anyway, so he was awarded the Distinguished Service Cross, which is the second highest award that is given to a member of the United States Army for extreme gallantry and risk of life in actual combat with an unarmed enemy force. So, and my understanding, I think the last time a soldier from the Big Red One was awarded, Distinguished Service Cross would have been during, during Vietnam War. So, I was very honored to get to go, go to that, and the soldier and his family were very humbled, and I know they had a great time while they were here. One other thing I'd like to, to mention is, I read a recent report that was given to a group over in Manhattan, and it talked about the amount of money that Fort Riley contributes to the Central Flint Hills region, and that's like one point seven billion dollars. And that report was presented from the Director of the Base's Plans and Analysis and Integration Office up on Fort, Ben Van Bleeer. He gave that report, and he also said that the installation contribute millions to the surrounding, surrounding economy, and that's in the, the realm of medical care, of outsourcing of medical care, spending from the veterans and the retirees, families and the visiting troops. So, that's always good to hear. So, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to share all that.
You're very welcome.
Talk to Spencer.
Mr. Brown?
Want to remind Commissioners about the Flint Hills Regional, Hills Conference, April twenty-fourth. I'm sure that we'll be putting something out soon.
We haven't got anything from their office yet, so.
Yeah, I, I gave the guys the flyers and stuff.
I thought you already emailed it to us.
Yeah.
So, remind them that. I think it's gonna be a really good one. Kudos to the Quality Play for All Group. Attended the grand opening down there, and then on Sunday, myself, the Mayor, we're down there with our grandkids, and I don't think I'd ever seen it, standing room only. And it's been that way at that facility ever since that day. I mean, it's just wonderful. I can't even tell you how great that is to have something, a facility like that, and we're really, really proud to have that. And Ed, kudos to your people for.
And Ray.
Putting, Ray and Ed both for the stuff that they did.
And the Fire Department.
Yep, and the Fire Department too, chief. So, good job to all you guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Mayor. Just tagging along with the, these comments regarding the park and the Quality Play for All Committee and everything, and I, I think with being out there, wish the weather would just been a little nicer on Saturday, but that's just Kansas for you, really. It was still a good, good turnout from the city, everybody, everybody was just so excited, even though it was raining and snowy, but kids were still sliding down the slides, and it was just a really beautiful sight to see. But I think this just shows so much that when ordinary people come together, how much extraordinary things can come about. And years, decades down the road, that, no matter where we're all at, sitting at this present time, that decades down the road, that park will still be there, and something we put our, you know, we put our all into will still be, and every generation from now can partake. So, I think that's one of the things that just really stood out to me, and I just take my hats off to everybody, and like I said, just our community just coming together and making that happen. That's just one, one awesome, awesome thing. So, thanks to everybody involved. Other than that, all I have is animal shelter next weekend, we'll report that next meeting, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Chamber Board, we meet Thursday. N P O is later in the month, no meeting last month. A T A Board, we met today, but there was a super minimal agenda, so nothing really to report there. Will mention there's a Legislative Coffee Saturday at nine a.m. across the street. The State Y P Summit is being hosted here in Junction. That's May tenth. Registration's open through the Chamber of Commerce, and I think those fees go up on Friday. So, register now. And then Brigade, Junction City Brigade Baseball, opening day is officially May thirty-first out at Wraith, so hopefully they get some sod down. I think the turf's about done.
One of these days, yeah.
One of these days.
Y P stands for young.
Young Professionals, sorry. Young Professionals State, Y, State Summit is hosted here in Junction this year. That's it.
Thank you. To kind of expand on the, the playground park additions, I just try to kind of stand back and look at things sometimes from a thousand yards and get a perspective. I've never seen that many kids at a city park anywhere, ever, ever. So, you know, we look at, at things to try to attract people to our community, things like that. And with the, the obvious turnout, makes we think we need even more things like that. If we really want to attract people to our area, yeah, we can say we got twenty-two parks, but we got twenty-two parks that have equipment that's forty years old. So, I, I think that's something we really need to start looking at in future budgets, to try to gear things towards improvements at the park facilities sprinkled throughout town, not just at one park. What they've done is tremendous, and they still have further plans to go forward. But I think we need to consider that kind of stuff going forward as we plan for the future. We start getting some more debt relief. We look at, you know, we always, you know, we're always replacing vehicles, and we certainly have a ton to do on the streets and so on. But I think parks are something we really need to put maybe some greater emphasis as we plan for the future, five years down the road, ten years down the road. So, and, and my hats off to the Quality Play for All Committee, and all the people that did the surveys for us, and everybody that helped, you know, make the project happen, despite the weather and the odds and everything else. It's just, it's tremendous what the power that people can do when they really put their mind to it. That's really all I have. Mr. Nikle?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Did have a letter I laid out in front of you all. As you know, last fall, when we applied for the Community Development Block Grant, we had a, nobody showed up at either hearing. We discussed this last meeting, and our grant advisor, Justine Benoit with Local Kansas Plain Development, felt that we could just say a state, nobody testified. However, you know, this person, Mr.?
Schmeddeman.
Schmeddeman, Martin Schmeddeman of twenty-ten Liberty Hall Road. Last fall, contacted Commerce, and they wrote a letter, they sent to Commerce about complaints, why we should not get a grant. Yesterday, I was requested by Justine to write a letter, and I've completed it all here. Basically, the highlights and disputes, some of the stuff he said was, is that, first of all, he made no comments in public session, so we never had a chance to even inform him at that time. He did concern about the annexation that was made in two thousand and six along Spring Valley Road. But everybody forgets, that was just a small piece. Most of the annexation out there was done as the subdivision was built out there. And this, this project's gonna serve not only that, but this project's gonna serve a grade school, elementary school, a junior high, a high school, a senior center, a fairgrounds, a baseball diamond, a large business, a couple of large businesses, and then our whole industrial park is served that way, plus other places too.
The Fire Department.
And the Fire Department, too. So, I mean, that's the reason why. The other, the other thing he said, he mentioned in his letter, that we, we are in excess of the state debt limit. No, we're not. Yes, the city had special legislation back in the early two thousand and ten decade here, to thirty-seven percent, now to thirty-four percent, and we're allowed to be at thirty-four percent of debt, and not all of our debt is applicable to the limit. I mean, you know, and this is numbers that we got from Columbia Capital, also is part of our audit last year. We're allowed to be at thirty-four percent until June of next, July one of next year. We are, last year, and December twenty, December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen, we don't got the two thousand and eighteen numbers yet from Mr. White, he'll be at the next meeting here, and, and bring those to you. We were at twenty-five percent. So, we're now below to thirty-four percent, we're below to thirty percent, inapplicable debt, you know, and, and working south, as I always say. The city has spent, and there are, we have spent one point one million dollars a year minimum as twenty-fifteen on the streets, and that does not include our matches that we did with K D O for Klink projects. It does not include the additional money that the city put in to make additions on the seventy-seven project at, at Lacy, at Lacy, at eighteen, and at Rucker. All those additions, the city helped pay for. It doesn't include the walking trail. We did all the things we did that the city has done. So, I brought that in my letter here as well. He was concerned about the amount of lots we have. He, we got a few of them. No argue there, and, and, you know, that's just a way to handle them. Property taxes, he claimed that, you know, forty-seven percent of local property taxes is for debt service. This year, we're thirty-four percent of city property tax, which he does not pay, at least at that location. And if you take a look at all your local property tax, adding school and, and city and counties, only ten percent. But ours, we're down to thirty-four percent now, been higher, but refinancing and managing the money the way the city has, has brought it down. I sent this letter in today, and I just wanted to share it with you, because it will become public and have here first. Talking about C B G, the, the park project, I did, Kendall Shermark talked to me last night, and I had Ed order today. He asked for signs to be put up, no dogs on the turf. One, of course, if the dogs do their thing on the turf, and then secondly, with kids and everything else, it's not like grass. And then secondly, you know, let's, let's keep that, let's keep the grass looking good. And I think it's a simple thing, there's plenty of room in the park for dogs, that's not an issue, but on the turf itself. And, and he wants to come to City Commission, I says, no, that can, I can just, we'll just move forward with that, because I think that's important enough and maintain what we got.
Agreed.
Very good on that. We did get bad news last week, not bad news, just not what I expected. You know, when they did this survey and got a seventy-three point seven percent L M I, we were able to use it for the grant we got this year. We're gonna be able to use it for the grant that we're gonna apply for, and we will apply for a grant this year, and probably for some more Spring Valley, more likely, we have stuff to discuss that next month or so. But we can still use that survey. However, HUD now decided, because C D B G money comes from HUD, to Department of Commerce, then to the, to the cities, into the counties, is they're gonna use the twenty-fifteen estimated L M I. And our twenty-fifteen low margin income estimate is forty percent, or forty and some change, as I put in my five fifteen last week. So, after twenty-nineteen, if we want to apply for grant in the future, we'll either have to hope that the twenty-twenty census moves the other way, which, which you really don't want, because you don't, you want, you don't want low margin income as much. But the point is, we may have to do another survey in the future. It's just the way it is, it's, we didn't write the rules, we just have to live with them. But we have one more shot at getting the grant. So, if we get another grant, the survey that, that the committee did, and all you who volunteered with it, got us a grant for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, got a grant for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, and hopefully we can get another grant for, I would like to say up to seven hundred thousand this year. So, that survey not only just did a park, it, it'll, it'll do a lot of street as well. So, I think that's really good, and keep that in mind. I think on the park, one thing that I mentioned when I gave my few comments on Saturday morning, and some of the calls that I do, is community gets together. I think this park marks a good point for the Commission, staff. Eight years ago, you couldn't have done a park. We, even though we have debt to service yet, and you'll see it with Mr. White next month, or next meeting, we keep, keep getting it down, you know, by refinancing bonds a couple of years ago, we're a lower percentage goes towards that, towards debt, and we can put in other projects. We're now able to do what I call the, the amenity projects in town. You know, when you come to the Legislative Coffee Saturday morning, you'll see a pretty cool-looking gym floor. You know, you go to Wraith this summer, hopefully it'll get done, you'll see a cool baseball field. You'll see a cool park. I haven't been out there, but I've seen the pictures Nick has shown me on Face, on his Facebook, on the golf course. Not big projects, but projects that make this community a little nicer living. And, and between the teamwork from City Commission down to our entire staff, and including the people in town that have, have bared through all this process, we're getting returns back. I think it's very good, and I'm very proud that I'm part of it, and I think we should all be very proud of it. School agreement, we're gonna have a meeting probably the next week or two, we have some, moving the date around a little bit, talk about our agreement on the high school project. Rotary Club next week's Tuesday, at noon, I can't attend, but I think Lindsay and Tammy may attend at my place. The Rotary Club is gonna dedicate those new plaques they made that were originally on the arch over here. So, you should get invited on that. So, that's plenty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tights?
We covered earlier what I have, so nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, sir. Chief Reesey?
Nothing.
Chief Johnson?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Arbora?
Nothing.
Mr. Hungers?
Nothing.
Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
How are your improvements coming at the golf course clubhouse?
Good.
Are you rebuilding cabinets, or are you replacing her, or what are you doing?
Rebuilding.
Rebuilding, okay. When do you think it'll be done?
Hopefully end of the week.
End of the election.
Okay. Mr. Gurman?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we're up.